I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Kinnick County Groundwater Conservation District to order. And in this established forum, we have Director Palmer, Director Schott, Director Plan, myself, Director Robinson, Director Ward, Director Gaines, and Director Manley present. Have a full board. You'd all please rise and join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Public comments. Gage Brown.
Hi, good evening. My name's Gage Brown. I'm a member of Lost Moritz Springs Conservation Association, and my family, also my sister, runs a livestock ranch in northeast Kenny County. My comment today pertains to Agenda Items nine, 10, and 11. According to the state audit, the district, quote, "did not effectively manage its payment and banking processes or adequately protect the district's legal and financial interests." In addition, the district did not consistently comply with applicable statutes and requirements, including Texas Water Code Chapter 36. The district also failed to enforce its water management rules, placing the health and long-term availability of the area's water resources at risk. The audit states, quote, "The general manager will be responsible for implementing corrective action." The scope of the audit included district activity from October 2021 through February 2025, and audited financial statements for fiscal years 2019 through 2024. For that entire duration, the general manager of the district has been Janelle Hobbs. My question is, if all of these failures occurred under her watch as general manager, how can we expect her to take proper corrective action to resolve these failures? It makes me wonder if Agenda Item 11 is in regards to Ms. Hobbs for the abuse of official capacity, as defined in Texas Penal Code Section 3902, which states, quote, "A public servant commits an offense if he intentionally or knowingly misuses government property, services, personnel, or any other thing of value belonging to the government that has come into the public servant's custody, like, for example, spending almost half a million dollars of taxpayer money without board approval." We as citizens of Kenny County must rely on you, the directors of the district, to hire staff who will abide by the district rules, bylaws, and the Texas Water Code without letting personal interests or incompetence get in the way. The current general manager has proven her inability to abide by these standards for several years. Y'all have heard the saying, fool me once, shame on you; fool me twice, shame on me. Well, I hope the district board isn't foolish enough to think the current general manager is capable of implementing corrective action for this audit or carrying out the duties assigned to her office. Now, in regards to the board president or presiding officer, I wonder if Agenda Items 10 and 11 relate to events we witnessed at previous meetings. I wonder if Item 11 is not only in relation to the general manager or for abuse of official capacity, but to Director Robinson, board president, for official oppression. According to Texas Penal Code Section 3903, official oppression occurs when a public servant intentionally denies or impedes another in the exercise or enjoyment of any right, privilege, power, or immunity, knowing his contact, knowing his conduct is unlawful. You may all recall at the beginning of the last meeting, Director Gaines said, quote, "We have in writing requested that a drought management plan would be put on the agenda, and it's not on there. Why is it not on there?" To which Robinson responded with many things that were not relevant to the question, before finally claiming that he made a mistake. Interesting mistake from someone who during the March meeting said, quote, "I'm laughing at you for thinking that's a priority," referencing the drought plan. Countless times during past meetings when other directors asked Robinson for clarification pertaining to, according to the rules, the time limit has to be stated at the beginning of the meeting, and it wasn't, so there is no time limit. Countless times during past meetings when other directors asked Robinson for clarification pertaining to the rules and procedures of the district, rather than providing direct answers to their genuine questions, he laughed at them. And he repeatedly interrupted his fellow directors, saying, quote, "I can interrupt you because I'm the presiding officer. Quote, 'It's my privilege to control what is happening in this room.'" When citizens expressed their support for certain public comments by offering brief applause, Robinson said, quote, "Applause is going to get you removed from the room. I don't need a rule. I'm the presiding officer." Let me ask the citizens, does this seem like the behavior of a leader or a tyrant? And let me ask the directors, is this the type of behavior that fosters cooperation and enables business to get done?
Yes.
I support the election of a new president or presiding officer, as Robinson has proven himself unfit for the position, and I also support the reconsideration of Janelle Hobbs as general manager for the same reason. Thank you all.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Brown. Ms. Cavender.
Hi, Board. How are you today?
Just fine.
Oh, good. I'm representing Fort Clark Springs. I'm the general manager, Sharlina Cavender, and I just have a few words to say. Kenny County has never been mandated or required under Texas statutes or regulations to adopt its own plan, and until recently, no one made it a priority. Today, however, we are now seeing the results of that hands-on approach. A concise drought annex would be, one, protect our drinking water supply. Coordinated triggers and restrictions would help keep the Edwards Trinity and Lost Moritz Springs aquifer sustainable for every household. Safeguard local livelihood. Farmers, ranchers, tourism operators, all rely on dependable water. At Fort Clark Springs alone, the prolonged drought has forced repeated closures of our spring-fed pool, eliminating an estimated $20,000 in annual revenue. A loss felt just as acutely as reduced cattle weights or failed crops. Unlike funding and streamlined response, a county-wide plan would make Kenny County eligible for higher Squirrel FEMA and TWD grants, align Stage 1 to 4 restrictions across Bracketville FCS mud and private wells, and give emergency management a clear, ready-made plan instead of last-minute alerts. In short, a drought plan is no longer a luxury. It is the first line of defense for our drinking water for every job in business that depends on the Lost Moritz Springs. Thank you.
No, of course. There's not going to be a disruption from the audience. You don't do that. And it's not about a rule. It's about order. And it's not the presiding officer's privilege to do that. Any board member can remove anyone for disruption. That's not just me. Mr. Montoya.
Mr. Montoya. She could have planned it. Remember, the county of Apache, Kansas, Texas. Also a member of the LMS FCA and the board organization. And I'm here to address Item 15 on the agenda about hiring a hydrogeologist. We expect the entire board, not just the general manager or president, to make a selection of the most qualified applicant, which should be a hydrogeologist, not a hydrologist. According to Section 5.3 of the district bylaws, the general manager shall compose a written policy concerning selection, monitoring, review, and evaluation of consultants providing professional services to the district. This policy, this policy shall be approved by the board and may be modified by the board. We expect a new hydrogeologist to have a contract like the former hydrologist, Bill Hutchinson, who resigned without delivering the money he promised to and failed to complete that the citizens of Kenny County deserve, and that is what is needed to conserve and protect our water for ourselves and citizens, as well as future generations. Finally, I request an answer to this question in the interest of transparency. When will interviews begin, and who will be conducting the interviewing? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Please don't do that. Naya?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I've signed it before.
It's okay.
My name is Anaya. I am a county of Apache member, officer, volunteer officer. I'm also one of the leaders of the border issues. And for the past three, four years, I've been director of the Gohhee Racquetville Community Gardens, which is going very well. We relocated in November to Paso and Fort Street. And today we have three large groups, 25, 45, and 55, 30 minutes each. So my entire is pretty much failing on the floor. And I love, I enjoy teaching children, and it's not only teaching them what they can eat from the back lawn, but also teaching them how to use the yard. There's many ways that we can conserve it. And as a group, I believe that we need to give the community a chance to come to the meetings. If we have it at 9 o'clock, a lot of them that I've spoken to, they take care of their elders, their mothers, their parents, that they have problems. So they work in the morning. So it would be better to have it in the evening. And I myself, very busy, I should be retired, I'm satisfied, but I can't find time to retire. And that's okay. I keep my mind busy, and I like to help people. And so, think about having it in the evening. Thank you for everything, and yes.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Sharon Wool. I'm representing the board. I'm on the board, Fort Clark Springs Association Board Member. And the audit is very disturbing. I'm speaking on number nine. The audit is very disturbing at the failure of this board to follow the rules, follow the Chapter 36 guidelines. Somebody said that I put my opinions, these are not my opinions, these are the opinions of the state of Texas audit. This is the third audit that this board has failed over the years. There's phantom interest payments, and they were mentioned of the 486,000. That's, I can imagine what would happen to me at Fort Clark Springs on the board. I wouldn't be there. You've got outdated bank signatures, you've got letters of agreements instead of formal contracts, there's no code of ethics, you've missed deadlines, there's just, they've categorized everything in the way that this board has operated. And somebody said, well, we have a new board. No, we have three new members. Some of these board members have been here for 12 years, eight years. And so, anyway, there's a lot of management deficiencies with the test wells. Some of them have been test wells since 2019, and they're supposed to be a test well for a year. There's oversight weaknesses, they don't follow the bylaws, the state code. There's recommendations that they've given you to correct some of these things. And as Gage said, it's been going on for a long time, and most of the members on here, except for three, have been on the board for a while. So I want to know what y'all are going to do to correct these, to give the faith back for the residents of the county, so that we can have faith that y'all are taking care of our water, that we're going to have drinking water. And we're not agriculture versus the city. We're not. We want the agriculture to flourish, we want Fort Clark Springs to flourish, and that's going to have to be a drought plan. So we're the only person aboard in the state that doesn't have a drought plan. Uvalde has a drought plan, and you go to Uvalde, you don't see their crops drying up and blowing away. There's grain pastures all the way, because they know how to cut back on their irrigation. And also, the farmers have crop insurance and stuff. The government can subsidize some of that. Fort Clark is losing, as our general manager said, not having our springs and not having our income is a very big hit to the fort and a very big loss not having the water. And in April, we had a full, everything was full. Soon as it starts irrigating, you can go sit out there and you can watch it go down. You've overestimated the pumping that can be done here, and you're not regulating it. And I want to know what you're going to do to get our confidence back, that you know how to run a board and you know how to run the water.
Please go with that. Thank you very much, Ms. Wool. I'm going to make the announcement right now. Agenda Items 10, 11, and 15 are going to be moved down to executive session under Government Code 551.074 Personnel.
Wait, 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 you're doing what now?
I'm moving Agenda Items 10, 11, and 15 to executive session under Government Code 551.074 Personnel Matters.
Shouldn't we vote on that, Wes? I don't know that you can just change the order of the agenda on your own.
Actually, it's not about, I can change the order on my own, you can overrule the order if you want to, but the executive session part of it is my call. It's going to be 2.2 of your bylaws.
I understand that, but if you have items on the agenda 10 and 11, you know, 8, 9, 10, 11, if you do it like is standard across the state, I would argue we should vote on that change in the order.
Agenda items may be considered deliberated or acted upon in a different order set forth above.
Read that. Who, under whose authority is that?
The presiding officer can do that, or the board, and I am moving.
The law code, or where is that?
Director, I'm trying to answer your question.
Please.
I'm moving them down in the order to put them by the other executive session items, so we're not running people out, bringing them back in, running them back out, bringing them back in.
Okay, I'm just going to go on record that I think we should vote on that.
Okay.
Well, before we do that, could I ask something?
Go ahead.
On the executive session Personnel Matters.
Yes.
You know, not certainly what exactly what referring to there, but based on last month's meeting, I would request that the Personnel Matters be an open meeting and not executive session.
You don't have that authority, Director.
I think, I think under the, what is it, the Open Meetings Act, that if someone that is the subject of the Personnel, things, requests it be an open meeting, it has to be an open meeting. So I'm requesting that.
The problem with that is it's not just subject to you. It's subject to the entire board.
But I'm included in the entire board. I request it being open.
It can't be an open session, Director.
Okay.
It involves other people, and it involves, it potentially involves people outside of this entity.
Then, moving on.
If you want to go ahead and make a motion and have the board vote to do it, go right ahead.
Regarding item, what is it, 10, I'll make a motion that we leave it in where it is, an open session.
Again, Director, you don't have that authority, but if the board wants to go ahead and do something that you don't have the authority to do, by all means, go right ahead, make a motion. You made the motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
What is the motion again?
Item 10, possible action, officer election of board president. I want that not to be done in closed session, I want to leave it in an open session. Make a motion.
Is that great talking? Yeah. Greg's on the line.
Yeah, I want to hear what Greg has to say.
You may need to say it again, I don't know.
Greg, can you hear us?
We can't hear him.
Yes, I can. Fine. You okay?
Yeah, now.
We can hear you. Can you state it again, Mr. Gray?
Well, I think I heard the question. What the open meetings act requires, the personnel matters, anything that's been said about Director Palmer, he can require that that be said in an open meeting. But anything that's been said about other people, unless those other people requested it be done in an open meeting, it should be done in a closed meeting.
What about making a motion? You know, Wes wanted to move Item 10, election of board president, to the closed meeting. I made a motion to leave it in open. Is that a valid motion?
Well, yeah, I think it's a valid motion.
You can make it motion.
I recommend, well, first off, I think we need to, the agenda and the closed meeting needs to be under authority of 551.071, in addition to 574, because that's how the county will be returning. And if you're going to be returning by any day, the district might get any kind of litigation. I would highly recommend you do that in a closed meeting.
This doesn't.
Without knowing what's going to be said, I can't tell you whether this is something that should be done in a closed meeting or an open meeting. So I'd recommend you start it in a closed meeting.
No, this, this just, officer, this officer election is all it is.
That's not what the requested agenda item was about, Director, and that's why I'm putting it in executive session.
So can I weigh in on that, Wes?
By all means.
Nothing can be voted on in executive session.
Nope.
So the item to take possible action vis a vis that item would stay in open session anyway?
No, we're going in executive session, discuss it, and then we would come out and act on it.
It would come out, and then that item.
Absolutely, we act on in public.
And it would be your choice if you wanted, as the board president, which that seems to be the point of number 10, is board president, that would be up to you to decide if you wanted that in closed session, the discussion.
No, it would actually be up to me to decide if I wanted to have an open session.
Well, so I mean.
Considering that, considering the agenda item was requested.
Correct. So if you decide that you don't want that in open session, then it.
No, I didn't decide, nobody asked me, and I'm putting it in a closed session because that's where it goes. It's where it should have been to start with.
Noted. I didn't draw up the agenda. Still come back out and discuss it in open session.
We're going to come back out, and we're going to come back out, and we're going to come back out and act on it in an open session. We cannot act in closed session.
Can I ask a question? Why are we going in the closed session? I'm wondering if we're going to come back out and discuss it again, and I don't, I'm not.
Don't necessarily discuss it, I don't think. You just vote on it.
We're going underneath Personnel and Attorney Consultation, 551.071 and 551.074, if I've got that correct, Greg.
That's correct. Can I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
If it relates to the board here, these people elected us to the board, why isn't it public? I mean, I'm pretty ignorant on all this stuff. The people elected us to the board.
If you get in executive session, we might be able to discuss it, Greg.
Yeah. In fact, parried back to your point, it says discussion, and you know, we come back from executive session, we're still going, we're not just going to vote on it, it says discussion. It'll still be discussed in open meetings.
If you want to talk, when you come out of the executive session, that's fine. Okay. Anything else?
There was a motion, is there a second?
Yes, there is a motion on the floor, that's right. There's a motion on the floor. Please repeat your motion, Director Gaines.
I move that Item 10 be held in open session as opposed to moving it to the closed session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second and a first to move Item 10 into open session. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same time. Motion fails. Yes, sir, that's what we're on. What do we have?
Obviously, the version that I have doesn't have anything listed, it's a second on Item number six.
I got, yep, I see that.
So I'm glad it was filled in, whoever made that one.
Oh, no, I've got it. On number six, I've got Randy on a second.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got, I'm looking at words, I think that was sent out several days ago. The next thing is on Item 11.
Yes, sir.
The rule numbers are incorrect, they should be 3.03, 3.02, and 4.04.
Yeah, I got 3.01, 3.02, and 4.04.
Okay. And on the, on the vote, I think it, I think it's, to be clear, it should say the vote in favor was four, and list the four, and then vote against three, and list the three.
Right. Right. You got that one, Janelle? Janelle.
Under the recess to go into executive session, as I said tonight, I think that needs to list both 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, and Personnel Matters.
Right.
Because we did both.
What item was that on?
That was under the recess and go into.
Oh, there we go. Right, right, right.
And Wes, on the item, moved Item 4, I don't recall exactly what you said, but it wasn't, take advisement, legal counsel. I think the motion was to take the matter under advisement, and, well, I'm not sure what you said about legal counsel, but.
Well, I don't recall saying that. To be completely honest, what I recall saying was to take the matter under advisement.
Right.
Period.
So if that was, yeah, if that was the motion, was to take the matter under advisement, I think that really was a motion to continue the item until this meeting. So, you know, I'm not, again, I'm not sure exactly what you said, but the effect of it was take no action. And so, either that could say take no action, or continue the item to the next meeting, or anything along that, rather than take it under advisement for legal counsel.
Well, what did we change? Well, the motion wants to take it under advisement. And then, at the end, to be placed on next agenda, I don't know. How do we cover that?
I would add, you know, for further discussion at the next meeting, or further discussion during the minutes, on the next agenda, something like that. Because that was, that was obviously a ten, that was the effect of what happened. So I think the minutes need to reflect more clearly what actually happens, as opposed to necessarily what was actually said.
Okay. It sounds like we need to amend these and redo these.
Yeah.
And approve them at the next meeting? Or can we just approve them with these amendments?
Those are the only changes I have. If you, if you ever was okay with the changes, or any of them, I have any changes, I think you can move to approve these minutes as mentioned by the general counsel.
I'm just not, I'm just not, well, okay, and then we can clean up the one on four at the end? Because I'm not sure how to word that.
If you want, if you want us to select, that's fine, too, we can figure out how to work it.
Yeah, I just, I just want to get the wording right on it, is all.
We just added the word "under" in front of "advisement."
Yeah, I know, but he wanted some clarification that was going into the next meeting at the end of the minutes on the deal, and I wasn't sure exactly how to write it. I don't know. I don't know at this point, other than to prove it, well, just, we'll leave it part off. It's going to happen anyway, that's what we're doing. I'm going to move that we approve these minutes as corrected by counsel.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those favor raised right here. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
I'm going to, I'm going to leave it out though, no, there's no noise coming through here, just the, and you let me know when you need to back on.
Roger, thank you. Okay. Uh, item six and seven, we have two drought management agenda items on the agenda. Can we combine these?
Yeah.
No, I'm just asking everybody to get with that.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, I'm going to move, I'm going to move that we combine items six and seven, do I have a second?
Second.
No, she's been made in second, you can buy nine, six, seven, all those favor raised hand. Motion carries. Okay.
All right, I guess I'll take it from there, so combining item six and seven. Just a report from the drought management committee, we met again prior to this meeting at four o'clock, so all the committee members were there. Director Menley, Director Gaines, and myself. Uh, so for anybody that doesn't know, I would be the drought management committee chairman, would say. So we got together, we talked about our efforts to provide the board. Uh, and also counsel Greg Ellis with the plan, draft plan, as mentioned in item seven. So we've been working on this, and we've been getting together, as we've had other meetings prior to today. And, uh, we each have a notebook of some other basically plans that exist around the state. And we've been trying to come up with something that would be acceptable in this county that will help us meet the DFC and comply with our duties uh, as the water board to properly manage the resource. So it's still in progress, we don't have a proposed draft management plan to give to the rest of the board or to counsel Greg Ellis today. Uh, but we are getting close, so we hope to do that, I don't know what you guys think, maybe next month. So there's a few things that we're still talking about before we bring it to the board. We understand that this process is, uh, going to take some time. I would also say, uh, we feel, uh, the public's desire for this. And I think Charlie, you would agree with this, the board, uh, you know, I don't know how they feel now, but before I was on the board, the whole board expressed the opinion that a drought management plan is something that needs to happen in this county. So the form of that's still obviously in the, in the works, but we're making progress to offer something to the other, uh, directors that aren't on the committee. There are rules, there's a reason the committee's only three of us, because that's the rules. So, so we're working on that. And, uh, then it'll go to the whole board, and then, you know, eventually, we hope, uh, sometime in the fall, that it can follow the process where it would go to public comment. And then it would be voted on by the board, and then we'll see what happens, so, so this is being worked on, we feel the, uh, you know, the desire for one from a good part of the public on both sides of the story, and we hope to come up with something that's going to make it better for everybody. And we're working on it. So that's the report. Any questions?
I'm going, I'm going to make a comment right here, it's going to go kind of informational for everybody, as well as for this little committee.
Sure.
Jim has got some information for us, so I've always been talking about where the recharge zone is at, and how critical that is to do a drought contingency plan. So with that being said, Jim has cut up with some, uh, data that almost defines for sure where that zone's at. I'm going to share that with everybody right now, and I'm going to make this real clear for the people that make these statements about the irrigators. We're going to clear that up right now. Jim? Go ahead.
Pull some stuff up, problem.
Now, ask me your question, what, what's your question? No, we're still saying the ginata.
This all has to do with.
It all drought management.
I don't, I don't know that, Director Bland, I don't know if this is necessarily anything new, and I think Mr. Palmer, I think some of this is already being seen. Um, this doesn't discount the idea of having a drought management plan at all, I just think that what we've seen from the data that's been collected, is we had the one rain event in July of twenty twenty three, and it rained in a very specific area of the county. And within twenty-four hours, the spring went from bone dry zero to thirty CFS. And there were several wells along the county, the stuff that was at the port, the stuff that's at the city, it rose forty or fifty feet. We saw, we did not see the same rise in water levels throughout the rest of the county. And so we can look at that data and look very specifically, and this is what Director Bland and I were talking about, he'd asked me some questions. And we can look and see with this one rain event, if we got a tenth of an inch down south, you know, three tenths of an inch down in the middle, maybe an inch here, or three quarters of an inch here in bracket, an inch over there, but in one area of the county specifically. There was seven inches of rain, six inches of rain, five inches of rain, and this is all information that we have said before. And so I, I think Director Bland, what you're, what you're trying to get at is that a, that any drought plan needs to consider the if it's just to deal with the spring, really needs to consider on where the water in the spring is coming from. And I think this is where you're trying to go, and we, we've got data, um, I've got some graphs and stuff that we can tell, we can talk about, but I just think at a big level, it doesn't mean that some sort of drought plan isn't needed, or the county shouldn't have something, there's certainly funding that is available if you've got a drought plan from Texas Water Development Board and others. But what, in this particular county, there is a very limited zone of recharge, that, that what we have seen, at least in times of drought, when everything's uh, raining and stuff, things may be different. But when the spring was going dry, we had water coming out of the ground in other parts of the county, and there's no water in the spring. And, and the pumping that we saw was not having an impact on it, and I think there is data that should be considered, and, and before you just put a blanket plan against the count. And that, that would be, that would be my suggestion. Um, there's a map, you want, can you pull up that Edward map that's on the back, just go through, keep going. Well, here, go back to that permitted, what permitting, go back for a second. And go back one more. So these, these are the permitted wells that are in the count. And the ones that are in green, I don't know if you can see that, if you can blow that up or not, but the ones that are in green are pumping over fifty acre feet here, the inner, the intermediate ones, um, you know, pump occasionally, uh, the gray less than fifty, and the white ones are non-operational. But that blue line up in the corner, that along the west prong of the oasis, when the west prong has water in it, water comes this direction, go to the Edward's Okafor. Yeah, uh, can you blow that up at all, or go maybe, is there next, is there another slide? There's not, can you blow up where Kenny County is, yeah, somewhere right in there? Yeah, go to the left seat, okay, so the big green area right there, that is the drainage area for the entire Edward's Okafor. The bluish turquoise in the middle, that is the recharge zone, so when it rains in that big area, water flows down, and it enters into the Edward's Okafor. The beige area on the bottom, that is the Artesian zones, where there's a confining layer where Artesian comes up, can you point to where Lost Morris Springs is? All the way in the corner, right, keep going, up, left, down. So Lost Morris Springs is on the very edge of the Artesian zone of the Edwards. And let me just, let me get on your grid, all of this, right now, during time to drought, we have a giant hole right here. Uvalde, I just from the EAA's, uh, meeting last week, the webinar, I don't know if those are participating, Uvalde is using ninety-nine percent of their groundwater. There was a massive hole right here that is, that is having some impact on the Lost Morris Springs. And so if we go over here to some of the white areas, somebody pumping twenty acre feet out of somewhere of the, uh, out left or down south isn't having an impact on the spring as much as that giant hole is, because when it rains, sorry. I wasn't really preparing for this, but when it rains up in here, a lot of that water is going this way, there's just a hole. Where is, is there another Edward slide, Jim?
Mr. Burton, I want to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Why do we have a GMA ten spring as GMA seven DFC?
That's a great question, I mean, you've got recharge from GMA ten that is outflowing, yeah, I don't know, that's a great question.
Well, I mean, I, I, I was always curious about it, because the, Lost Morris has always been considered the furthest western discharge of the Edward, and the Edward is in GMA ten. But we have a DFC of Lost Morris Springs in GMA seven.
Technically, you are GMA seven.
I, I don't know, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Those are the groundwater management area, ten, seven, the county's local, and two.
Oh, bear in mind, I want that DFC because I want the spring flow.
Yeah, and I think everybody wants a spring flow, but the, we've got to, you've got to look at where that water's coming from. And I was at, you know, tag business meetings yesterday with a lot of groundwater district managers yesterday and this morning. Um, and there's, you know, there's a lot of emphasis on trying what Edward's Okafor is trying to do, and there's a huge population increase in that big giant hole.
Is there another, is there another graph in there or no?
That's up to, not me.
I have a suggestion.
I'm not saying the drought plan's not important or necessary, I'm just saying, I know there's been a lot of discussion in the past about some, a blanket across the county.
I think we get something, I think we get something down a lot quicker, make everybody happy, okay? Everybody, everybody is concerned about the fact that we have seventy-five thousand acre foot of permitted water, okay? And so they want to knock those numbers down, because they're, they're certain that it's going to impact the spring, whether the science is there or not. Okay, so we want to take from the permit seats. Why don't we just ask them to give it to us? Via voluntary mitigation program, the board decides there's a drought in place, they can sign up and agree not to pump their water. And in return, they don't have to pay the water you see on it.
Yeah, I think that's a great discussion.
People will sign up left and right for it. I'll do it without any remuneration, because I've been accused of being this pro pumper, I sign up right now, I won't pump my pump to the end of the year, or when the board says the drought's over.
Let me close on this, I think Mr. Menley has a, a question, so this is put out by Edward's Okafor Authority, see these red arrows? Water's flowing that direction, and the deeper the hole gets, water sinks its own level, the deeper the hole gets in Uvalde and Medina and Bear Counties, more water is going that direction. And when we've gone six years with below average rainfall, what was the sixteen inches, I think? We only had sixteen inches last year in, in our area, and water went that direction, a lot of it did. And so we got one big rain event right in our sweet spot, and the spring went from zero to thirty CFS, thirty CFS is about nineteen million gallons a day in twenty-four hours. And we didn't see the same impact in areas down south of Standard Lane, I didn't see the same impact up in the Pental Valley, we didn't see the same impact up in the northwestern part of the county. Um, and, but you did see it in, in a narrow stretch from that area right down to the spring, and there were certain wells that came up forty or fifty feet in twenty-four hours.
And Jim, you don't have a map of where that rain event was, right, we talked about that before, remember, like, go back and get like radar returns where that event was.
Yeah, we do, I do, we do have that, I don't know, um, I presented some of that yesterday, actually, I'd have to come back, but we, what we have.
But I mean, if you were to just tell us where it is, is it about where that red arrow is?
Yeah, right, right about, we'll go back to the line that I had drawn.
I mean, where, where did that event happen, there was a half, you know, six inches or whatever.
Yeah, so Mr. Palmer, so if you, if you consider, well, is there a better one? Got to have a better one. Should look at these closer here, but, so, um, okay, yeah, so there, you can see, so if you scroll along, I probably, I'm going to turn my back on the audience here. So here's the west prong, right here, right here, can you see my arrow going through here? See, here's the west prong, and when water, when, when it rains to the northeast of the west prong, however far up, and water gets into the rest, west prong, it is going along that same edge of the recharge zone and the Artesian zone, where water is getting into the Edwards. And the spring water is not the sulfur water that we see south of Standard Lane, the spring water is nice, good quality, native water that's coming up out of the ground.
And cold.
And cold, yeah, and it's not ninety degrees, I mean, that's the other thing, the temperature, the temporal, uh, temperature variations and spatial temperature variations on some of this stuff, that's a whole nother discussion, but it does help you determine where, where sources are, that's a good point. Um, but when water gets into the west prong, we, it, and it gets into the west prong down around where that R twelve, five point five inches, or five point one five, right about that area, it begins to flow right along the edge. And this is, this is the best available data we have right now, and we're continuing to collect data every month. If we get data two months from now that says, shows us something different, we're going to be back here presenting the data that we see as something different. Um, but this is what it's showing, and that one, the July twenty-third rain event, really, because you look down at the bottom, we got a, you know, point one four inches, point three one, one point one nine, and these are, and then it goes up into the Edwards further, I just cropped this off for this, but where, where that green little oval shape is right there, that specifically we saw wells in that area spike within.
Sure, I mean, that's.
It's been twenty-four hours.
What the data shows, it's, you know, but it's complicated.
It, it's complicated, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean that a drought contingency, the drought information, that we don't need to try to do something, but it needs to, but the, the only thing I've heard on the drought side of it, and I think that Director Bland, this is what you and I were talking about before, is a blanket, everybody needs to cut twenty-five percent.
That's not how it would go.
Yeah, and I, but I haven't been part of any discussions, I'm, Mr. Gaines, can I go to Mr. Menley here real quick, just?
Well, I went back to all your old charts.
Okay.
And graphs. Since two thousand nineteen, we have been in a steady decline, you have peaks and valleys in it. But it has steadily dropped since two thousand nineteen on these wells that I have sitting there, and there's more.
We can go to the, the, if you look at your annual rainfall, it has been steadily declining. And so I would expect that the regional water tables would also steadily decline.
The drought plan is probably the most important thing this whole committee and this whole place is supposed to come up with. Because that is the most important, we don't have that, we don't have anything to secure anything.
Well, I'm not going to argue with that.
I'm not, I'm not doubting all your data, I'm, I'm going by what your data show.
Yeah, we're in a, we're in a drought, I mean, you know, a lot of Texas isn't in a drought right now.
Problem with it, the problem with it, and while it's not required in chapter thirty-six, is in my, in my opinion, is because of the complexity of it, and most districts don't have the information to make sound management judgments on it, because they don't know what, where the water resources is and where it's coming from, now.
Blanket deal would not work.
Hang on, if it was voluntary, it would. You get fifty, sixty thousand acre foot of permitted water, signed up for, guaranteed for them not to pump it through the end of the year. And we could do it real quick, as long as it's legal.
Okay, how many people we have sitting in here? We have seven people sitting at this table, and we don't all agree on everything, how are you going to get all these people to agree on that? On how much and when?
Because instead, instead of trying to take something from someone, you ask them for it, and you give them something in return for it, it's pretty simple process.
Anything from anybody, just like he's saying, the drought will not.
Talking about someone's right.
Take is, take is a big word, Wes, I think you better be careful with take.
What?
Well, no, 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 take is a big word, that's a legal word that has legal definition.
That's, that's what you're.
So don't use take.
No, that's exactly what you're proposing, is a drought plan that takes someone's right, and what I'm, what I'm suggesting is we can have one a lot quicker, doesn't have to wait until the fall. Get people signed up before summer over with, they're not going to pump their water.
If you say so, then, uh, let's see it, yeah.
You and I and he, and he are all responsible, one hundred percent.
Totally. So we'll work on it.
We got one seven, we got one seventh the authority of a governing body.
What's it, one, yeah.
Let me finish.
I will.
But each one of us got one hundred percent of the responsibility. Everybody was complaining about that audit, every deficiency in that audit, one hundred percent your responsibility, yours, mine, his, everybody sitting at this table. Can't point a finger at anybody for that. It's up to us to fix it.
That's arguable.
No, not under law, it's not. Okay, anything else on drought management, gentlemen, do we have anything to vote on?
Yes.
Yep, go.
Well, no, Mr. Gaines, I think, did you have a question with me?
Well, yeah, a couple of things, one, you know, I was part of the, the first drought minute, when we had fifteen people representing, you know, all, you know, I hate to say it like that, all sides. And everything that was proposed had, had zones. And everything that's been contemplated now has zones, it was, nothing was, was blanket area wide, ever. Right, the, the problem was that we were.
All right, the, the problem was that we were waiting on the geology and, and Dr. Bill to come up with the zones. And, you know, he came up with the geology supposedly the next, uh, people we hire can, can, you know, define the, the zones a little better. But it was, it was never blanket. Why? We're just trying to, and, and this certainly helps. I mean, whomever coming in behind Dr. Bill, it certainly helped. And another thing, while, while we're on the subject, I've, I've worked with Jim, um, for what, two and a half years now. All the man does is data. I mean, you know, he has opinions like every, you know, any human being. But he's on not, he's not on one side or the other. I've heard people on both sides kind of, you know, curse, you know, Jim or what he's doing, thinking he's trying to steer things one way or another. He's not. I mean, he's, he's out there telling us two and two and two, and, and we're, we're coming up with, okay, that's supposed to add to six. But all he's, all he's doing is providing the raw data of, of what rain falls. He's, he's, uh, got a, got monitoring stuff and, and all these wells. We continue to update that. With, as technology increases, we voted multiple times for more and better monitoring equipment, which, which he has put to use. So, so anything that this man says is, is based on what he observes. Uh, he's not trying to push anybody one way or the other. So, so please, I wanted everybody to understand that, 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 that Jim, Jim is, is neutral in this and he's just providing data. But yeah, back to that, we do, the, the drought thing, um, we are very close. We, I mean, we, we're, we're down to, to just a few words in the language. Um, you know, David was, was, um, I don't know, I mean, maybe covering his tail a little bit, didn't want to get expectations too high. But we agreed tonight that, that what we're, what we're planning on doing is having an outline or more for the board to look at and potentially vote on at the July, today's June, July meeting. And that way, if, if it, if it, if it passes board muster, then it can be, um, you know, Greg can put it into the legal language and then we can schedule a public hearing, that sort of thing. But, um, you know, David has, has worked his tail off on this. Um, I hate legal language and he's, he's dived into it, uh, more than I ever would. But, um, but, but he's, he's got something that, that I think that the three of us can support and get in front of the board. Uh, next month, August is absolute latest, so that we can schedule a public hearing on this. Anyway, thank you.
I'm gonna add, I'm gonna add one more thing and then I'm finished. So, a little bit of stuff that y'all don't know anything about, but everybody's fixing to, uh, learn some of the things that happened just a few months ago. Okay? So when we went to this board, everybody's saying that this board doesn't have, uh, doesn't care about the spring. This board doesn't do this and this board doesn't do that. The first meeting this board had with the directors of Fort Clark, presented by me to them from this board, was for us to be able to put a monitoring well over there. And anytime in a time of drought, the water would be used from that monitoring well to fill that pool. And that was totally rejected. Then it came up to the other deal about another well and into a different aquifer. That's been rejected. Now I'm going to give you one more deal that I want y'all to think about. Because this is important. The drought contingency plan is important because of future conditions and what can happen. So if you take, go back, uh, Jim, to the, or go back to the, to the, the big one, that one, go back to that one. That one. So if you see what the areas are swinging out, where the, where the, now that you've got to remember, this is all about money and it takes money to do that. But if we were to take and put a well over there where that top red line is, where that water's flowing out to Uvalde. And you put a well in there and then you loop another line back right above Brackenville. So that water is just continually circulating. Um, what would that fix? Just think about that. But it's going to cost money. But here in the long run, just like that, that lecture that man gave the other day from the EAA, uh, this is going to get worse. So we need to do something. So for everybody in this, uh, whole community. So just going to leave you all with that.
I think a quick call, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
It, it might be helpful for the committee if I joined the committee work early on. So I could provide them with some information about what's worked and what hasn't worked with other districts and the things we're going to have to do in a drought plan.
Sounds good.
Just, this is a suggestion. I mean, if they're, they can invite me or not, I'm open to being invited. I would suggest that that might work.
Give them a call, gentlemen.
Something after the call.
We'll get the invitation out. Okay, anything else on that? Number eight, discussion possible action, proposed rule changes three point oh one, three point oh two and four point four, previously published and considered for public hearing.
All right, I guess that's mine.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I sent the, Blake had requested at the last meeting, kind of, you spell out the, what exactly is changing and why. I sent, sent that in an email to, to the board. Um, so I guess at this, at this point in time, see if there are questions or can we proceed, you know, on the, the three, the three rules, you know, one at, one at a time.
One at a time, Director. You, you have a change?
Then, then starting with, um, rule three oh one. Um, this was something that was suggested by Dr. Bill twenty-one months ago. His suggestion was a hundred acre feet. His goal was to, to make it, uh, the, the permitting process less onerous for smaller wells. Um, you know, the committee that I shared last, last year, um, felt that the, the hundred might be too high. They wanted lowered to fifty. And some of the, um, folks, uh, you know, some of the pumbers pointed out, and it was in one of the counties to the east of us, that they had a similar rule, but, um, somebody over there had different people apply for less than, than the fifty or hundred acre foot thing, but they were all part of the related entity. And so they're trying to get around the rule by having multiple applications for the same project or the same area. So that's the reason for, uh, that Greg added the three oh one, uh, was, you know, the, trying to define, uh, related party. So that, you know, related parties are combined and therefore only subject to the one fifty acre exception in the, in the permitting process. Questions on that?
It does not, it does not address my issue with, with a rule that I stated the first time it was brought up, which is? Which is withdrawal rate determines impact, not the annual amount. The rule, first off, the rule was not suggested by Dr. Phil. This rule came up because a solar farm wanted to have a restroom and a kitchenette. And they were going to have to go through a cur, commercial permitting process in order to get that. And they didn't understand it's test, they didn't understand the testing process or what it was for, so they didn't want to do it. And it was mentioned to the board and it got mentioned to Dr. Hutchinson. And Dr. Hutchinson said, he's looking at it annually, a hundred acre foot doesn't matter. But that doesn't determine the impact to the aquifer. It's the withdrawal rate of the well. The way this is written, it is fraught. Absolutely fraught with abuse. If you have a well, okay, everybody's upset about water trucks being filled all over the county because they, all this water is moving everywhere. All right? The withdrawal rate determines how fast you fill up that truck. You write this rule like this, anybody can come in and get a permit and fill up trucks because you have not limited how fast they can pull it out of the ground. That withdrawal rate is what determines the impact to the, to the aquifer. It's not how much you pull out of it a year. It's how much you're pulling out of it right then when you're pumping it.
Isn't that the part of the regular permitting process?
You don't understand what I'm saying, Director.
No, I didn't.
You're not, you're not addressing withdrawal rate in this, in this permit by rule.
When you apply for a regular permit, do you, do you address the withdrawal rate?
Yes, you have to have it on there.
So, so this says you must meet all the requirements for a regular permit. So that would cover what you're talking about.
No, it would not.
Why?
Because I'm talking about limiting the withdrawal rate to something reasonable. You don't have any limit on withdrawal rate. If they hit a well that makes three hundred gallons a minute, they pump three hundred gallons a minute underneath this rule by permit. And guess what? They can fill up trucks real quick.
And what?
The purpose, the purpose, the purpose of this rule, no, the purpose.
Commercial.
Let me finish. The purpose of this contemplated rule was so when some, when a commercial user wanted to come in and have a small little permit just for a restroom, they didn't have to go through this whole permitting process. Now, this has been developed into this and it does not address for a commercial user, okay? It does not address the most relevant part of the permit, which is the withdrawal rate and you have to limit it. If you want to do a permit by rule like this, you limit it by withdrawal rate. It doesn't matter what the annual amount is. The impact to the, to the aquifer is determined by how quick you're pulling the water out of it, not by how much they get to pull out every year. It's when the well's working.
Where's the science on that, Wes?
Yeah, no, no, I mean, what's, yeah, I don't, I don't see that. At one, it's not commercial. All right, commercial's a diff, different thing. And two, it says it has to follow the requirements for regular permit. A regular permit would take that into consideration.
It doesn't matter what kind of aquifer it is, whether it's sand, gravel or karst. The withdrawal rate determines the impact. That's how fast you're pulling the water out. That's how fast the conundrum pressure is going to go out. How many wells is going to hit? Well, then why are you asking about?
I don't agree with that.
Oh, oh, you don't agree with it? Okay.
You have to show it to me. Show me the science.
No, no, but, 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 no, no, you know, the heck with the science part.
I mean, if I can legitimize on it.
I don't, I don't see, I don't think.
I don't know why you can't figure out, just add something in there and make it work. But I, I, Wes has a point that if you just, if you decided to pull out fifty acre feet today in one day, and that's the only day you're ever going to pump all year, you're going to have more of an impact on the aquifer than if you pump, say, twenty gallons a minute every, for twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. There is, there is some, if you, if I pump fifty acre feet out of the ground right here, right now, and I do it in the next thirty minutes, I'm going to have more.
You want proof, you want proof. It's written in thirty-six. What, what are the exempt, what are the exempt wells? What are the exempt wells? They're not written for the amount that, that they can produce a year. They're written for the withdrawal rate, seventeen point five gallons per minute. Anything below that? Bingo. And if you're going to have a, a permit by rule, you need to make damn sure that it's a small impact well and limit the withdrawal rate.
Isn't that part of a regular permitting process? Yes or no?
You're not going to have a permitting process.
Yeah, you are.
You're not.
It says you must meet all requirements for a regular permit.
The purpose of the rule is to get around the permitting process.
No, you're getting, you're, you're shortening the permitting process for a small well. And I think commercial is, is done differently anyway.
Charlie, what did Dr. Hutchinson say about this? He said it wouldn't matter if you gave on.
You know, he's, he's the one that, that, that proposed it and all of, all of.
What did he say about it?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, well, when Dr. Bill made some suggestions on this and I was involved in this, I don't think he was thinking that, about that someone was going to drill a well and suck out a hundred feet in one day, a hundred acre feet in a day. I think that he was thinking if someone's going to, uh, provide a well that is a little bit more, that, that if you're pulling out fifty acre feet over the entire year, you're not going to impact the aquifer. And I, I think that was the, that was the logic of the discussion at the time. I think what Mr. Robinson is alluding to, that there is a potential, even though Dr. Bill, we were thinking over in this area, there is a potential for someone to abuse it. Fifty acre feet a year is about thirty gallons a minute, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So there, there is a withdrawal rate to that. If you want to limit it to only so many acre feet per month, or whether it's an issue or not, I don't know, but I, that was the thinking that we were talking about at the time. But if we find for a permit, or a hundred, he was talking a hundred acre feet, there was a lot of process, a lot of regulatory things that needed to happen, test wells, et cetera, for a hundred acre feet. Bill's thinking, if you're going a hundred acre feet over the entire year, you're not changing anything. Going a hundred acre feet over, you know, you go over here behind the, behind the court.
Well, this is half of what Dr. Hutchinson said wouldn't matter.
Si, simple enough. In order to, in order to limit the liability to the district and the impact to the aquifer, you don't need any more than the seventeen point five gallons per minute. You've got something to hang your hat on because that's what domestic use is. You want to do a permit by rule, put it at seventeen point five. They don't need any more than that to run a bathroom. I don't have any problem with having a permit by rule if you're going to limit it to seventeen point five gallons per minute.
Right, let's vote on it. That's so, to, to do that, would you add that length of fifty acre feet? You know, uh, limited to seventeen point five gallons a minute? Would you, would, would, with adding that language satisfy you?
The way that you amend your rules, Director. You don't do it in a business meeting. You have a workshop. You sit down so we can talk about this and spend the time and think about it. What you want to do is just try and come up with a solution that satisfies so you can get a vote in a business meeting and push this through. Your only excuse for bringing these back up was because I told you you couldn't. That doesn't benefit the district. It didn't benefit the public and it certainly didn't benefit anybody else.
That's your opinion, Wes.
Well, no, I, I totally disagree with all of that.
You admitted it in last month's meeting. The only reason you brought this up is because you said, that's exactly what you said to him.
No.
Yes, that's what you did.
That is, that is, you're misconstruing everything. This was brought up.
It's kind of like you keep saying that these were approved last year when they weren't.
Twenty-one months ago. Randy voted for it, Matt voted for it, Blake voted for it, I voted for it.
And you're mischaracterizing it. You did not vote for these rules.
Yes, we did.
No, you didn't. You voted for a motion.
Outline for Greg to come up with these rules.
You voted for a motion to propose these rules. That's the process. You didn't vote for these rules. And you think because you voted to put them up, that, that means they're great, they're golden, and we've got to do them. And we're going to push them through, push them through, push them through.
So you want, you want to drag it out more to add three or four words to this?
No, I want to rewrite the whole rules and fix the problem in the testing process. But nobody wants to seem to do that. We would just want to keep going back to this stop.
Well, if you want, I don't see the problem. Uh, you know, it says requirements for regular.
We got a state audit that is eating us up on those, on, on a whole rule.
If the regular permit, you know, this, this, will a regular permit, do, do your permits, if you withdrew all of your allocation in one day, can you do that? Is that part of your regular permit?
If my well can produce it, you bet you can.
So you're not, you're not limited doing it that way.
You're limited by your well.
I know, but aren't these people limited by their well also?
That's the point that I'm trying to make. You don't know what kind of well they're going to get. You have no idea.
Fifty acre feet a year.
Okay, that's an amount. That has nothing to do with what the well is and you don't know what they're going to get when they drill it.
You know, not to exceed, what is fifty divided by twelve? You know, forty-eight and, and a third? You know, acre, or, or, I mean, excuse me, you know, you know, so many acre feet per month? Add that clause and it solves what you're talking about.
I, I think there's two different things. I mean, because are you going to have more impact in an aquifer or wherever, if you pull fifty acre feet in one day versus you pull fifty acre feet over the entire year? The answer is yes. You're going to have more impact. Is that impact significant? Probably not. And I think that's where Dr. Bill was going, you know, I, you know, I don't, I don't know. And so from a science base, from a rules and regulatory and how you go about doing this all, I'm, I don't know, but you're, I don't know that it really matters, the fifty acre feet, whether it's for one minute or for the entire year in terms of the impact. Will it be different? Yes. Is it significant? I don't know.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm thinking not only the impact of the aquifer, but of, of surrounding wells. The withdrawal rate is what affects the surrounding well.
Be an issue.
Okay? Uh, that's why we have a testing process within our rules that no one understands. Is to give the permittee an opportunity to pump that well for a year while we monitor all the wells that surround it. And figure out what the impacts of that withdrawal are. And then we can use that in determining what amount we're going to give them. That's the purpose of that. And yes, we need an ending date on it. That's one of the things we need to fix. We need to have a timeline on when we're going to have a hearing after the end of three hundred and sixty-five days. It didn't get written in there. It's been needed to fix for a long time.
That's a good point.
And instead of trying to go back and hash through stuff that we already voted down, we're not going in there fixing that. We're bringing this back up. Which you cannot fix in a business meeting. Time simply doesn't allow for that to get good work done. You're going to have to come in here and workshop, talk it out, write it out, read it, go back, do it again. That's the only way we're going to get our head wrapped around it. You can't do it in a business meeting. It's ridiculous.
I said this to you, you know, a week ago, and I didn't hear any suggestions from you.
Director.
You're talking about working it out before we get here. I didn't get one suggestion about this.
Yeah, that's right, because you haven't reached out to me for the last six months.
Concerned about it, why didn't, why didn't you add the language?
I'm way too busy putting out other fires that are constantly being thrown up by people trying to exceed their authority. I, I'm not in favor of this rule as it stands. I would rather sit down in the rules workshop and work through all of them and get this done.
That's fine. Why don't you just move to do it and let's vote. Your opinion's noted, Wes, and that's one vote of.
I, I don't, I don't move in the negative. If y'all want to pass this, you're going to have to move past it. I'm not there.
I know, somebody will.
But if we, if we add the language.
I'm sorry, Director, you cut off the recommendation.
I make a motion we pass, Bill. We can always make amendments for these after we do these. But if you don't go anywhere, you don't get anywhere.
Director, just to be specific, you're making the motion to pass Propose Rule Three Point O One.
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and the second to pass Propose Rule Three Point O One. All those in favor, raise your hand. Uh, yes, excuse me.
Apparently, would you be amenable to amending your motion to this fifty acre groundwater per year? Not to exceed, you know, four and a half acre feet?
But it says.
Not to, not to exceed four and a half acre feet per month?
Where you're supposed to go by the regulation of what you already have. It has to go by that.
What I'm talking about, what I'm, what I'm talking about is Belton, Belton's suspenders. I mean, if you add that not to exceed four and a half per month, that, that should take care of what Wes was complaining about.
Should, but it already said hold up the regular permit.
No, no, I, I know. I'm just, I'm just trying to add something to, to cover the contingency that he brought up.
We're going to have fifteen applications for this tomorrow.
Are you amenable to amending it to add that?
Yeah.
Okay.
To do the, I'd rather for us just to wait.
Pardon me?
We need to, if we need to go back and do the rules, right now we've got an audit that we've got to deal with. So if, if we need to go in there and change the rules, we don't need to be going back and forth with it.
This is why we have an audit, because we haven't been getting the rules and regulations all set down for the whole thing.
But now you're going to pass something that's not right.
If we, if we're not moving forward. If we sat down at once.
Disagree. It's only not right in some people's opinion. Dr. Hutchinson proposes so.
This is why. But my deal is, okay, so here's my problem with it. So if ten permittees come in and they drill ten wells at five, fifty acre feet per year, and they're within two mile radius, what's that going to do to y'all? Why don't we fix it right, right now?
Well, but, but that's part of the regular, the requirements for regular permit. I mean.
You know, just vote it down then.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting is this, that you've got the whole public here that's looking at a, we need to sit down and rewrite these rules with that public being there, and so they can see exactly what we're going to. That's the transparency. This right here is just adding on, adding on, adding on, and then you're taking away from it at later time. It, it doesn't make any sense.
You're trying to do it during the business meeting, and that's not, that's not where this is done.
If we, if we do this right, we need to do it the way it needs to be done. Do the whole thing so everybody can see exactly what we're doing. The whole public here does not know everything about our rules. That will give them the opportunity to learn what our rules are.
It has gone through that.
Present them.
It's, this is a public hearing.
We've had a public hearing, all that stuff. No, this is all out of, not, they're all out of context. You don't have the whole rules sitting here so people can see how they go together.
This rule, and the rules are standalone rules. This rule, Three Point O One, is a standalone rule. It's a rule. Three Point O Two is a separate rule.
I understand that.
So this rule was proposed, went through the lawyer, went to the public hearing. It was voted down once. It's the option of the board to readdress it. And if we don't want to pass it, however many people vote to pass it, or many people vote to don't, it's, you know, done.
That sounds like a talk for the questions. Does anybody else have a discussion on it? All those in favor of approval of Rule Three, Propose Rule Three Point O One, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion fails.
Moving on to Three O Two. Wes's objection to it was, um, the mag was mentioned twice. Went through and deleted it for his suggestion. Rest of it remains the same.
Actually, that was not a suggestion. We have missing in the rules, the definition for executive administrator. It should be the executive administrator Texas Water Development Board. And what you're actually deleting is required statutory language within our rules.
That's, so what's the correct, what's the correct? What did you say there is the correct?
Uh, hang on a minute. I got a copy of the code. Uh, we need a definition in the back that defines the executive administrators, the executive administrator Texas Water Development Board. It's a miss.
But that part was eliminated. So what is the definition there?
Because I think we have to have it.
It's statutorily required verbiage within our rules.
Yep. Greg draft, Greg drafted this. If you eliminate that and just the statement about the mag being unreliable remains.
We do not need a rule that says the mag is unreliable. It is only a permitting consideration to start with. It does not limit anything.
I think Dr. Hutchinson.
Why did Bill suggest it?
I'm trying to get you a copy of the statute, but you guys just want to keep firing about stuff you don't know about.
Correct me if I'm wrong, did Greg, you on the line there?
No, we got to get him back.
Right, so.
No, I'm here, I'm here.
There you go, there you go.
All right, Greg, you can help us with our memory. Did or did not Dr. Hutchinson, while he was employed as our expert hydrologist, suggest a rule back in September of twenty twenty-three to say that the mag is unreliable and should not be considered an issuing permit? I mean, there are slides that show that, as far as I know. What's your recollection of that?
The question is, do we need a rule that says the mag is unreliable?
Well, the question is, did Dr. Hutchinson?
Yeah, I, we already know what Dr. Hutchinson did. The question is whether we need a rule that's reliable.
So you're, so you're saying that he did say that the mag is unreliable?
There you go.
That's what I thought you said.
I never said he didn't. Yeah, he's got to do a slide. Big deal.
Well, there you go. I trust some of his judgments. I mean, that particular one.
That, yeah, the guy that you want to mention in open session that you want to sue is the one that you want to go back and quote. I do not understand you, Director. You want to attack the man and then you want to use him in the meetings? I, 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 I don't get it.
Look.
It's required under thirty-six.
Are you trying to say it's either take the whole thing or leave it? I mean, you got to.
No, I, I just cannot.
As a bad consultant, and you got to take his word for some things, don't you? That's a totally separate issue on what he did about the contractor. If he left without the model, that's a different issue. It's not the same.
What you want to do is find something in the slide that you can hang your hat on, and that's, doesn't cover my, that, that doesn't cover my butt.
What I want to do is I want to do right, Wes. That's what I want to do. I want to do right. So if that's not what, you know, you want to do, is your opinion of right is different than mine, that's fair, who cares? Have your opinion of right. I got my opinion of right. Let's vote on it. It's a big deal.
I don't get it. If I, if I could go ahead and comment, answer.
Please.
I, I wasn't there when Dr. Bill said whatever he said, that I, I don't remember him saying it needed to be in the rules. I hear him saying it's unreliable. An actuarial rule, the only, the only effective part of this proposal is a statement that the, the board shall not be considered in issuing a permit. That's problematic because thirty-six, one, one, three, two, the water code says, a district to the extent possible shall issue permits after the point the total volume of exempted permitted groundwater production will achieve the requirement the applicable design feature condition. And the issuing permits the district shall manage total groundwater production on a longer term basis to achieve an applicable design feature condition and consider one, the modeled available groundwater determined by the executive administrator.
So literally what's written in the rule is in conflict with the statute that we operate under.
Prevention is in conflict with chapter thirty-six. I can't remember who I was talking to. I mentioned that a long time ago. And it was split back in, back in the proposed rule. That's what was published and, and you can, you can adopt whichever part of this rule you want to. You can adopt the entire thing. If we get sued over it, it's going to be pretty hard to defend that particular section. If you want to drop that line now and adopt the rest of it, you could do that. Uh, you don't have to adopt exactly what was proposed. If you add something to it, there's a good possibility I'm going to recommend that we send a back count for more public comment.
I, I, I don't understand why this is all in red, because I thought, I, I'd have to pull up the rules, but I thought this rule was already in place with the exception of C. I thought that was the only thing that was, that was added to this was the mag was unreliable. Though it's not in exist, it's not, it's not in there anywhere now.
I'm going to have to look at it.
Because I figured, I, well, I just figured most of this is probably in there because it's kind of brawl or play right out of the statute that we have to, we have to consider it. Uh, who determines it? And whatnot.
Don't do it, then let's vote on it.
No, the red.
Don't move, make a motion, just, let's just now make a motion. Can I ask for a motion if anybody has a motion to pass that rule?
You can make a motion right now.
No, I don't want to make a motion. I just want to know if anybody has a motion. If Greg says it's probably not a good idea, that's.
Well, you can just table it.
Well, let's do that then.
You don't have to vote it up or down. Table it, or vote, will you vote it?
I'm moving to table this rule, given council's recommendation.
I second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded to table. All right, if we table it, then it's just, it's just coming back.
Well, you said we need to discuss it, so I mean.
Okay, well, we do. Well, we could, hey, look, it doesn't matter. If we table it, that's fine. Because what we should do is have a rules committee meeting and work on all of it anyway. So, and we do it in there, so. Motion been made and seconded to table Propose Rule Three Point O Two. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Who seconded that?
Uh, Director Manley seconded it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Four O Four. When the first proposed, we had not hired Marty. Anyway, we're going to have, um, Marty's going to check the third, thirty largest wells by volume, uh, the thirty largest permitted wells by volume, post it to the, um, website on a monthly basis. There also a permittee on our non-operable wells, non-operable, non-exempt wells. Permittee will notify the district within ten days if a non-operable well is converted to operable status. Anyway, make a motion, we approve Rule Four O Four.
Has Greg looked at this one too, Charlie? Pardon me? Has Greg looked at this rule and? Greg, have you looked at this rule?
Four O Four?
Not, not, I'm sorry, is it Four O Four?
We just, all, all we're doing, still having Marty do it, have the.
Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Four Point O Four, Greg.
Can you repeat, Greg?
Yeah, four Point O Four is something that I have reviewed in, in the past.
Well, have you reviewed this?
Here, here's what I said in the past. If the rules should, should state what permittees are required to do or prohibited from doing. And it's clearly a language impossible. The, if the, if the rule is, is designed to have the staff come take the readings, then the rule needs to state that the permittee has to allow the staff to come take the readings. What I had originally proposed was that the permittee was required to record and report. And that was rejected in favor of a rule saying the staff is going to go on and, and take all those readings. I, I think the staff can go do that without having a rule, unless somebody is refusing to allow the staff to come on and take the reading, in which case we might need a rule saying you have to allow them to come on your property to take readings. And, and that might end up in Fourth Amendment, probably, so. Most districts have a similar rule that say we can come on the property to take readings on the, on the meters and work this is how often we're going to do it. And I don't have a public rule that says that.
I have no problem with the rule. I just think that we need to do what he said, and said landowner has to provide access if we're going to be rigging the well. Have you seen Charlie's handwritten notes on this, on the changes that he wants, Greg?
I have not.
Do you want to, Mr. Birdy, you want to table it and, and, and let Greg look at it? Does that make you feel better?
Well, I just. I have a problem, I have a problem with it because I think it's unnecessary.
Already doing it. I mean, we're already doing this.
What's, what's it, Jim?
Well, um, I was just going to say, just for a matter of context, we have been tracking production wells, looking at monthly numbers. And out of a hundred and fifteen permitted wells, this year up through the end of May, there's only twenty-six wells that are pumped. And half of those have pumped for the entire year, less than fifty acre feet. And so just from, just from a concept of what you're doing with the rule, I saw, I heard the thirty number, that's all the ones that are being pumped right now.
So, okay, I want, I want, I want to break those numbers down. You said about twenty-six out of a hundred and fifty are being pumped?
Hundred and fifteen.
Hundred and fifteen. And about half of those are under fifty acre feet.
For the entire year.
For the entire.
Well, not for the entire year, through, up from January through the end of May, thirteen of those are less than fifty. Many of those are less than ten.
So we're looking at the other half. You might call high impact if you wanted to put a tag on it or whatever.
I think the highest for the entire year is maybe three hundred acre feet or something over the period of where we are.
We've been working on some real-time history rotation of some of these, have we not?
We're, yeah, we've got, oh, I.
We got, we got a few of them already put out, don't we?
Yeah, we do. Yep. Yeah. And so pumps go on and off, and the, the, I, like I said yesterday in the tag meeting, um, the extraordinary cooperation with the landowners in, in this county is unprecedented. The amount of equipment that we have on private infrastructure in this county is unheard of for most other counties. Um, it's just not. I think General Manager just came up to me all day yesterday, wow, with all the data that we presented, this is district equipment on private, um, in private land, on private water infrastructure, and it's unheard of. In terms of the number of instruments that we have out there collecting data and real-time data. Mr. Bane, I don't want me to poke people out, but hey, every time the pump turns on and off, I can see it. Absolutely. And for my, I've been doing this for thirty-something years. It's unprecedented. And Ms. Hobbs, leading the way in two thousand thirteen, in, in, introducing us to the community, has allowed that to happen. And, and the third, there, there's only, there's only really thirteen wells in the entire county that are, that are pumping water. And, and.
And we got, we got real-time instrumentation, three or four of them already, and we're working on others?
Yeah, we got a lot, we're working on a lot more, and we're, we're, we're making progress.
So it seems.
And the areas where this is being pumped were areas that were not, we didn't see impacts from that big rain event. So I, I keep beating the same thing. If I see data that's different, I appreciate your, your confidence in me, Mr. Game, but if I see data that's different, I'm going to say something. And we just haven't seen it yet. And Mr. Palmer, I know you and I have gone back and forth, and I hope I have the same trust from you. But we, you know, if we get the data, we're going to say something different.
My problem is I don't see the purpose that this rule serves.
I think any, having a rule that says you need to allow, the landowners need to allow staff on property, I think is something that is important because there is situations where that is, that's.
Do, do we need a, do, do we need a, do we need a rule for that? Or do we need, or do we need to have a, do we need to have an agreement whenever we put, hey, let me ask you this. Do we, do, when we put district equipment out, do we sign any kind of agreements with landowners when we do that? We just doing it by agreement, but word of mouth? How we do that?
That's, no, there's agreements of Ms. Hobbs committed.
So, so we're actually getting, we can get access when we put the equipment on there. All right?
Well, yeah, and also meter reading though. I mean, if you have staff doing meter reading, I think as Greg alluded to, you know.
Well, if you have staff doing meter reading, yeah, you definitely have to, but we got staff doing meter reading now, and we don't have a rule that requires it. Because everybody's agreeing to do it.
Not everybody.
Oh, we got a handful that aren't?
Not a handful.
Oh, interesting.
I don't want to get into details of it.
There you go, there you go. I didn't know that. Interesting. Okay. So, what's the board's pleasure on Four Point O Four?
Can I ask a question? If you want to vote that we have to let the person come on.
That's not actually in this rule.
Well, I was just wondering what the landowner's liability is to the person coming on the property. Do y'all have something to cover your staff?
I, I, Ms. Davis, I don't even know if we can actually have the authority to enter property like that, because I don't think we have any right of eminent domain. We passed the rule, but it doesn't mean we can do it. I, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't read, no. I, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't read, no, I hear what you're saying.
I didn't understand part. I'm wondering what is my liability?
Absolutely. I would be concerned about that too.
Cause nowadays it's like every time somebody comes on the property, you're.
It's a very, it's a very good point. Thank you. Anyway, what's board's pleasure on four point oh four?
I just don't want to open a can of worms on this. We have a great relationship with the landowners. Janelle's done a great job with that. I know there's some bashing earlier, but they don't know.
This sudden involve the landowner.
Well, I know, but even if we say, cause a minute ago I was like, we ought to have a rule to allow us access. I almost feel like we're overstepping and we're hurting that relationship with the landowners and we don't want to do that.
But, but that's not.
Well, I know, but that was something, what I'm trying to say is what I said earlier, I'm clarifying on that first. That I don't think that we should, I was wrong for saying that, looking back at it.
We're already, we're already getting the data.
On this, we're getting the data if, if we need to have Greg look, my deal is Greg hadn't even seen these notes that, that we have here. I mean, if he wants to look at them, I mean, my, my deal is I think that we should take a Saturday, have Greg come down and we sit down as a board and go through these rules and start working through it. And we probably need to do it once a quarter until we get through all of it.
I agree with like, we need to really start looking at.
Because we're just throwing stuff up here and we keep throwing stuff up here. And I'm like, this is a big thing, a problem.
Start all over.
And we sat down on Sunday for four hours and we got a lot accomplished for our brush control committee and it went smooth and everything's legit and right here. And I'm like, why can't we do that?
This has been contentious from the get go.
Well, like I said, just a lot of this stuff, you cannot reasonably expect to sit down and do this in a business meeting. It's just not reasonable.
Looks important on having these wells that we can read them. If we do have a drought, how in the world are we going to say, well, you're using too much water or you're not using? How are we going to monitor them? You're not going to be able to get in there and read them. If this drought deals, if everybody wants a drought contingency plan, we have to cooperate and let people come in and read the meter.
But I think everybody, I think what, what Director Ward is saying is that everybody is essential.
Yeah, but you said they was.
Well, we.
Yeah, okay. Well, everybody's included on this drought plan, not just a few of us. Everybody's included on.
Yeah, but legally, I don't know if we can do that.
Well, legally, I know, but if we don't have anything that starts standing on. I mean, it's merely a suggestion. Okay.
The, the awesome, the awesome thing that they're working on right now is that real time. Cause that will take it out. You know, you're talking about a site visit once every six months.
I have, no, I haven't had one individual tell me we couldn't.
But if they're not making them come well.
I'm not saying there's not. And I think there's some, there's some concern on how you're going to use it.
At the same time. But everybody's involved in this drought plan and we all have to be on the same page on.
In consideration of what Blake said, I make a motion that we table four oh four until Greg looks at it.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Put the second on then.
Let's take it.
Okay, discussion possible action, state auditor report on district compliance with chapter thirty six. Water code and other applicable laws. I move table this until we can have, take it up in a workshop.
I'm thinking that. I'd like to say something.
Absolutely.
On this state, on this state auditor report, um, a lot of y'all don't know me. I professionally, I've, I've held a CPA license. Supposed to be honored in Austin next month, you know, for fifty years in the state of Texas. Uh, all that means I've lived a long time. But, but I, but I, I said, when I got, you know, when I got out of the army, I joined Price Waterhouse in Houston. You know, largest CPA firm in the world as an, as an auditor, you know, young army officer and, you know, gung ho, go get them. And, you know, auditors live and breathe for finding something wrong. I've been through this thing. Are there problems? Yes. But don't, you know, don't, don't, don't look at the individual. I, I don't know. Look at the whole picture. Talking about the finances, they didn't find one expenditure that wasn't correct. You know, there was nothing, nothing stolen. We had a, we had a CPA audit the two or three years recently, uh, to catch us up because the old CPA was sick. Um, you know, it was exemplary. The state audit, there's, you know, and I'm not, I'm not running it down, but auditors are, are paid to find things. Um, this bit about, you know, well, we spent four hundred and something thousand dollars without a contract. Yeah, we did. Um, or there, there was a, a director that, that signed some checks after, after he was no longer a director. We're a small town. We, we do things by handshake. Everything was on the up and up, other than we didn't follow the, the form. Should we? Yes. Are we going to in the future? We're going to address that. We're going to get contracts with these people? Yes. Um, we're going to have an ethics code? I mean, you know, yes, we can do all that. But none of that has anything really to do with, with the day to day operation and whether or not it, um, if anything bad happened to the district or the district's money, it didn't. The one thing in there that was the most concerning, which again, we're going to address is this, this test well thing. I mean, that, that concerned me greatly. Um, you know, but beyond that, the, the audit itself, I mean, again, you know, speaking as the fifty year CPA reading between the lines, it wasn't that bad. And, you know, I'm thankful they, they did point out things that we need to change and we will change them. But the things they pointed out had no, no particular negative impact on the district or, or water, except that test well thing. And we will look into that. That's all I want to say.
Uh, for what it's worth, I think I, uh, I think I've read, I think it was mentioned that there was three state audits. I think there's actually been four or five in this district since its inception. And now I've read all of them. This, this one wasn't bad. Uh, we got a lot to fix though, and you always do. Any other discussion on it? All those in favor of table on this? Raise your right hand. Motion carries. No, all opposed. Six to one.
Who, who was the second?
Just I was.
Okay. No, I mean, just for the record.
Oh, that's good. I appreciate all the help keeping that straight on get. Uh, discussion, we're going to skip down to twelve because we're moving ten and eleven down. Discussion possible action, time of day change for regular board meetings. Okay. Before we get into this, everybody keeps coming up here claiming that we're trying to move this to nine o'clock in the morning to eliminate two directors from being able to attend the meetings. That's not why this agenda item has been placed on the agenda. The directorship has expressed that they would like to have the attorney at every meeting. So we got the attorney's schedule and all the directorship has received. And it's on the agenda so we can figure out when we can have the attorney here at every meeting. That's the only reason this is on here. It has nothing to do with eliminating anybody from being at the meetings. And by the way, everybody on this board works.
Wes, can I make a comment on that?
Absolutely.
When you say the directorship has decided to have the lawyer at every meeting.
I did not say that.
What is that? What?
I did not say that.
Clarify it for me.
I said this directorship has expressed that they want the attorney at every meeting. So the general manager obtained it. We, we've got a.
So you just said you want the, the directorship wants a lawyer at every meeting.
The seven people at this table have expressed that they want the attorney at our regular meetings. So we gave all seven of us.
Was that a vote or, uh, help me remember?
Does express sound like a vote? No, they, so these comments have been made, these comments have been made repeatedly during these meetings. We want the attorney here. We want the attorney here. We want the attorney here.
Every meeting, uh, let me go on record that I don't think it's necessary for every meeting to have Greg here. If that's what you think I think.
Very well.
Fine, but I want to go on record. That's not what I think. I do not think that every meeting Greg needs to be here.
That's fine. All I'm saying is this has been used for some kind of campaign thing. Trying to claim that we're eliminating somebody from being at the meeting and it's, it's wrong. That has nothing to do with it. The directorship has said they want the attorney at the meeting. We gave everyone the attorney's schedule. No one wants to step up and make a suggestion on what day will work or what time will work for anyone. Everyone wants to point, you do it, you do it, you do it.
I think we tried last meeting, but we'll have to look at the movie.
No, that's when it got put on the agenda and all of a sudden it was the only reason it was on the agenda was so we can move it to the morning and eliminate two guys from showing up because that's what everybody was coming in there and saying.
It's ridiculous. Wes, I don't know what you're talking about. Everybody's saying it's.
You got public comment coming in, Director.
Well, don't make generalities. Let's vote on what we're going to do about it.
It's pretty specific. It's the organization that you represent is coming in and claiming that we're moving the meeting. So you can't be here.
You can make that claim whilst the organ, I don't know what, you want to expand? Time out, time out. Time out, everybody. What, why don't you expand on your claim, the organization that I represent?
No, Director, the item that is up is when, when we're going to have our meeting. So when do you want to have, when do you want to have our meeting?
Make blind accusations, Wes, without backing it up. If you're not ready to support it, then do, you know, then let's go.
Anytime.
When do you want to have it? What day? I don't think it needs to be changed. I'm good with when it is. And I is, I would be in favor of a PM meeting and I don't really care what day. And you, you guys, if you want to change it, deal with Greg and figure out a time. I thought that was odd last meeting that it was on the agenda to change the date. But we didn't know when Greg could do it anyway. So we didn't. So if Greg has a date that works for him and you guys vote to make it and.
I don't care.
Invite him every time here. That's your business. But I don't think he needs to be here every time. And I'm good with PM meetings. That would be my vote, but there's no motion. So let's, you know, figure it out.
I, I think, I think we need to make our bylaws conform to whatever we're going to have on a rules. And I don't care what day, time that is.
Committee, let's have a meeting.
Director, it's been expressed in multiple meetings over the last six months had, matter of fact, I believe Director Millie expressed it thinks we need to have the, the attorney here, I believe it's April at every meeting. We got his, we got his schedule. We gave it to the board. Nobody wants to talk about when they're available. Nobody wants to coordinate it. And it's not my job or anyone else's job to do that. It's everybody's job.
Are we paying this lawyer?
Yeah.
He come when we need him.
Uh, no, it don't work that way.
He has to fit in his schedule.
Well, we're paying him. He has to fit into our schedule. If I've got somebody working, they're going to work for me on my schedule.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. That's what it's supposed to be. Do you hire anybody that has their own schedule?
This man has a lot of clients, I know.
Well, I'd say it's pretty obvious. Nobody's prepared to discuss this or come up with a solution. So I'm going to move the tablet. I'm going to move the tablet.
It's, it's a small, it's a small point, but I was not given great schedule.
Okay, we'll figure that one out after the meeting. Uh, it motion been made and seconded table this agenda. All those in favor raise your right hand. All opposed? Six to one.
Brush management board. Director Ward.
All right. So just like I mentioned earlier, we met, uh, June sixth, which is Sunday evening at four o'clock and we ran probably till eight o'clockish, uh, discussing this stuff. Um, basically I've been kind of pushing for this thing and along with the help of, uh, Director Shaw and Director Robinson both being present. We just went through a few things. This is nothing set in stone. This is stuff that can be built off of, but what I'm asking for is for the directors' input on this. If you see something that we're totally off on, if you see something we need to add to, now is the time so that we can do it in our committee. Present it to the lawyer, then present it to the board or present it to the board, then present it to the lawyer, whichever way we want to do it. Um, if y'all need me to, I can read through each one of them. Um, we don't want to get into this thing too fast. We're shooting for a start date after the beginning of the next fiscal year. It's up to the board how much money we want to put into this. Um, the number one things that I see here and I'll just kind of go over the highlights of it are, um, we need to kind of, if this is something that we want to do, of course, it's up to the board for the final approval. If we know of areas that are in a high recharge area for the Lost Moore Spring, Pinto Springs, any other native springs that may be in the area, maybe we would, uh, prioritize those properties, um, start brush removal on those properties, uh, in a more rapid timeline than if it was just regular, uh, regular properties. Um, the, and I think you brought it up earlier, Palmer, about being Director Palmer's to see the, um, the recharge area. Uh, you know, where's this water ending up? And did you bring that up there? Somebody mentioned that earlier about looking in a canyon and seeing, and we were talking about a very coarse recharge on that. And what better way to know where it's at than to be there? Um, but this is just something that we can go through. Like I said, we can meet, uh, y'all want to talk about this after the meeting? If you want to email me directly with anything that y'all see that we need to change, what we're hoping to do is maybe coincide on a grant with NRCS. The problem is that NRCS only has a certain amount allotted money. So not everybody's going to get that. And some people don't qualify for it. Some of these people may have a ranch that's in the recharge area of the springs, the crucial areas. Um, but I feel like we need to be doing something. We got Jim working on his data and science. This is something that we could probably work on. Doesn't have to be something we jump into, you know, headfirst, but it's something that we can slowly step into and try and get some of this cleared up. Um, one landowner approached me about it the other day and he would be in the direct recharge of Pinto after going over it with Jim. And, uh, I think Wes had a few, uh, comments on that as well. Uh, he, he's covered a juniper. He says, I, I, I can't even have any grass. I don't have any grass. I can't even graze any sheep, uh, goats, whatever he wants to graze. And he's like, you know, this would be something that I'm interested in. And so I think that, uh, it may be something that we get landowners, uh, interested in. I think it's something that'll be beneficial to the spring, to our aquifer recharge. The one, the other most important thing is in order to do this, the landowner would have to cooperate. And Jim putting in his monitoring equipment on their water wells on the property. Rain gauges, whatever else we want to put up there because.
They confusing.
Yeah.
Potentially soil moisture before, after kind of thing. What, what are we seeing? What are the differences in Blake or Director Ward? You and I have talked about that. Absolutely.
And it may only be fifty acres in the first year, but it's, it's a start. It's a start.
You're recording, you're, you're, there's some metrics on success.
Well, we were talking about a pilot program trying to work at the teaks anyway. You start it small and figure out all the details and then, and step it up if it works and everybody's happy with it.
Does anybody have any questions on?
Well, I think it's really important, uh, for this to be done. There's going to be a lot of stuff. When you do the drought contingency plan, there's going to be a lot of things that you need to add to it in order to try to reach your goal. And this is going to be one of.
I think one of the biggest challenges we're going to face, the DFC for the Lost Moore is up. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's in the wrong DNA, but in order to, in order to meet that, we're going to have to come up with management strategies beyond lowering or affecting withdrawals because there's just not enough in the period. It's significantly impacted. If you're going to decrease the, the times of intermittent where it doesn't flow, if you're going to decrease those times, you're going to have to probably look at different management strategies beyond that. And you're probably going to have to employ multiple ones in order to actually make it work. And you're not going to get it with one. There's no way. There's just not, there's just not enough use where the water's flowing from to get it all by cutting use. You, you're going to have to employ more than one management strategy to keep that DFC.
Brush control is going to help the drought plan.
Just one. Yeah, it's just a little.
It's going to help. If you, you have ground that's bare and just brush, it's not going to grow any grass. The grass is the only thing that's going to slow the water.
Well, grass does, grass does some wonderful, wonderful things. It, it runs a lot less water through it. It slows the grass down and allows infiltration.
And it stops all the evaporation. There, there's a number of things.
I love the way it folds the leaves up whenever it starts getting a little dry in the ground. You roll them right up where it doesn't, it doesn't suck any water out any faster.
This is, this is a down the road. This is not a tomorrow solution. This is infrastructure for the.
It is, it is a help. Well, starting the whole thing.
And one other thing that I don't think you mentioned unless you, you're headed that way was, you know, if it does work, that, that we might be able to get some additional funding out from outside.
I visited with a state representative about this program. They're very interested. I was hoping that we could kind of, we won't be the pilot on this because they do this around Travis County and everywhere else in Texas, but it would be pretty cool to, uh,
Be a pilot.
A pilot for us, maybe Uvalde County, maybe we can work together with them in Edmonds. Did you have a question, Charles?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I've been doing brush control for, you know, seventeen years. And it's horribly expensive and, um, you know, we don't have the, the money to do this. And the amount of money we trying to allocate would, would do so little that it, it won't have a measurable impact at all. I think our time, it's important. I think our time would be and money would be better spent on education, trying. I think our time, it's important. I think our time would be and money would be better spent on education, trying, trying to tell. Some people out there aren't aware of what NRCS can do. Yes, their money is limited, if not as limited as ours. Um, oh, I mean, to, to have an impact on the spring, you've got to do thousands and thousands of acres. And, you know, the last brush contract I had, the cost was something like 250 an acre. I mean, and, and you said that might even be low. I think your, 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 your family have done some of this in the past.
Yeah, I bet it is.
I, I imagine it's low, but my deal is we've got to start somewhere, Charlie.
Oh, I'd agree, but we don't have the money to, you know, to make, to make an impact.
Acres at $500 an acre, that's 25,000 dollars. And we can monitor off. I mean, what do we spend on other equipment? I mean, everything's expensive.
Yeah, everybody knows it works. I mean, it, but, but we have to scale it up and we can't do that. Other than involving the state or the feds or, you know, NRCS, but you, you know, pushing people into these programs.
But if you don't show them that you're committed, they're never gonna back. You have to lay groundwork first where they can say, hey, Kenny County's trying to do something.
NRCS will do it for anybody that walks in the door. You know, that, that you don't necessarily get the money, but they'll, they'll put you on list and send in an application.
I, I mean, it's not all that easy and there's a lot of red tape to give.
I've, I've gotten probably. Eight contracts from NRCS, just on my place.
I've had them on my place as well, but I'm, I'm gonna tell you, it wasn't, it wasn't just easy.
Well. But it, it didn't, it didn't involve spending.
So did you, did you, did you walk, what else are we gonna do with these funds but help the community? I mean.
Oh, I think your idea of the wells was, is, is.
Well, that's not gonna go, Charlie. There's too many entities involved in there. That's sad part.
Charlie, this is just another tool in the toolbox.
Yeah, but it's, so the money we have to spend on it, it's.
We're so smart.
How do you measure the effect on the spring from 50 acres 10, 20 miles from here? It can't be done. I mean, pushing it, getting people to do it on their own. I mean, they're, they're certainly wealthy landowners up there that, 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 that might listen to it. But, but we don't, we don't have the, the funds to do anything more than push and educate to have any kind of a real impact. That's my only point.
We can't move forward on anything. I mean, there's always a, a rife. Let's move forward on something without any. Let's unite as a board and back this thing.
Get it started, then it can grow. And then you get your grants.
Well, do, do you have any additional on this, on this one?
Me?
Yeah, on this one. I'm just checking because it's, it's fine to make comment on it. It's just a report, okay? We're not taking action on anything. So, let's move on to number 14.
What I'm passing out there is the annual report. Um, now if you look over on the back page where it has, um, the appendix, there's a number of things that are not attached to this.
You cut some down?
Because it would be nearly as sticky as a only San Antonio phone book if everything was attached to it for each director. We do have the one here and we'll maintain the one here in the offices we're required to. But some of the stuff that I want to think as an, as an attachment, for instance. Groundwater elevation monitoring network in selected wells in Pinto Creek. Okay, as y'all are aware, we get that every, y'all get that every month, uh, at the board meeting. And if you take, you know, the whole 12 months and try to. Attach a copy of each one of those. Sometimes we've got six or eight, sometimes 15, sometimes there may be 30 or 40 different graphs. Too much to attach to this. Um, also the, uh. The different maps that's been provided to y'all, I think, through the years. Uh, I record every month on meetings that have been attended, so that's why all that is not attached to it. So there's no action to be taken. This is just for y'all to review and then we'll have it as an agenda out of next month. For, uh, action to the board.
For acceptance or approval, owner?
Sir?
For approval or acceptance?
Yeah. Good. Yeah, well, I, um. This month, actually, it just came in, uh, today. We did have one application for an exempt well. First one we've had since, uh, mid-October, I believe. I think I'm, I'm not mistaken, this is off the two or else the road. But it's just for an exempt livestock well. Uh, the next GMA 10 meeting will be in San Antonio and. I guess the last week, next to last week in August. GMA 17 has not scheduled any, another meeting at this point, and I don't know about Ridge and Jay. But that's in, in the groundwater summit, uh, will be in the latter part of, in the latter part of August. I'm passing this out. So you're gonna have to read it and. I would request that wants to read it. I think it would be signs for the audience to hear it.
Thank you, man.
Or I will read it if you want me to.
Oh, I'll be glad to do it. This is from, uh, Adam Foster, Executive Director of Texas Land and groundwater conservation, Mr. Ty Janelle. I wanted to reach out and thank you for your board allowing Jim Burton to present at our tag business meeting. His presentation was very well received and incredibly informative. He did a great job highlighting. Some of the groundwater issues y'all are facing and explaining how the district's ongoing study is designed to help answer some of those important questions. We're very much looking forward to seeing the final results and analysis. We really appreciate his insights and the opportunity to hear directly from your team. Please extend our thanks to Jim for representing the district so well. Best, Adam Foster, Executive Director.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, gents.
Thank you for attending.
I think it was very impressive that he was invited to be one of the presenters.
Good job, man. Just Janelle, Adam Seal, there said legislative update. Is there anything of import there?
Um, we will have a final, I don't know if Greg's still on there or not, but we'll have a final.
He's there, he just probably got it muted. He muted.
I know that the governor has until the 22nd to sign off on any of the bills and so probably next month he'll have a final.
There he is. Uh, Greg?
Did I miss a question?
No, 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 no. There was, there, there was only about the legislative update. Do we, do we have anything on that? It was on the agenda and, uh, Director.
This was, I can report that this was one of the busiest groundwater sessions in history. I think we had more groundwater bills this time than any time in my, my memory. The good news is that everything that I really disliked failed and. Most of the stuff I, that I liked, I thought was gonna be a good plan in the past. There's some clarifications in chapter 36. We will have to do some rule changes based on some of those changes. Not, not anything drastic. Uh, just, uh, some clarification. Um, I, I do want to mention on litigation that there's. There are two, there are really now two lawsuits and maybe a third coming before the Supreme Court of Texas. Most of that has to do with procedure on how and when you can file suit against the district. Especially for, for a permit of appeal. And that was not clarified this session because nobody, none of the members wanted to touch it while it was being decided by the Supreme Court. So we'll have to keep an eye on those to see if that affects our rules at all on, on things like motions for rehearing and, and. How to appeal a permit, although I don't think, since, since the original permits came out, I don't think a single permit's ever been litigated or appealed from this district. Uh, but we still need to have the rules in place in case something that does come up or there is a, there is a contest.
Right, have to be prepared.
I, I've sent out to, uh, Janelle that, uh, list of the bills that are sitting on the governor's desk is, as you mentioned, she, he has until the 22nd to. To sign or veto. If he doesn't sign, it becomes law anyway. Uh, like the president, he doesn't have a pocket veto, so wherever he vetoes, he vetoes. We'll find that out sometime around the 22nd. And then I'll put out my final list.
Uh, okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, we have anything else we want to hit before executive session? I don't think so. Okay, we are going to recess into executive session.
What about 15? Did you move that one?
No, that's an executive session too. That's personnel.
Is it?
Yes. Can't talk about that in an obsession.
So it has been moved. So 15 was moved.
Yes, I made the announcement. I moved 10, 11, and 15. All of executive session.
Okay, so, help me understand Wes, um, you signed this, right? This is your agenda that you signed.
Uh, no.
Executive session in the win.
Talk about it in the executive session.
I'm calling it to recess. Everybody please exit the building.
Much appreciated, guys.
We're going into executive session. Okay, we're gonna call this back into.
Recorder on that?
Yeah, on the open, back into open session. Uh, agenda item 10, possible, uh, discussion, possible action officer election board president and any other offices vacated, but as a result of that election. No action? Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
No action on that item. Uh, agenda item number 11, discussion, possible action, request investigation by the county attorney, district attorney. Attorney General or Texas Rangers, possible penal code violations. I moved it, uh, this board request investigation by the county attorney and the possible penal code violations.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Abstaining?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One against and one abstain.
Four, two, one. And there was no discussion on item 15 in executive session, so we're taking that up right now. Uh, discussion, possible action to sir, proposal received and selection of hydrologist. Much more pleasure.
Who wants to start off and which one?
Well, timeout. I gotta, I'll start out. Is there a written policy guide on hiring said consultant as depicted in the bylaws?
I do not know.
No, we did not have one at this time. Yeah, we have what's in the, um, I guess that's in the bylaws that speaks of, of hiring. But we don't have a, what we got written up for on the. Audit report. We do not have that.
Alright, so I'm just looking for the board's knowledge in section five of the bylaws from 2015, use of consultants. Uh, 5.3, so. I'm looking for the written policy that concerns the selection, monitoring, and review.
Yeah.
Do we, if we don't have it, I, I think we might need it before we get a consultant.
Greg, you got any opinions on this? Uh, he's got it muted. Oh, Greg, there he is. Okay, uh, Director Palmer is concerned that we do not have, what is the policy?
Yeah, Greg, in the current bylaws from 2015, that we'll have to get you a copy of, there's a section in there, section five, use. Of consultants and there's a paragraph 5.3 that talks about. A written policy that concerns a selection, monitoring, review, and valuation of consultants. Providing professional service to the district, but it appears we don't have that written policy at the current time, so. Shouldn't we have that written policy before we decide who we're gonna hire as a hydrogeologist?
Uh, that, that's not, there's not a legal question there. I don't think there's any, any law where you'd have a policy in place where you start hiring professionals there. Is that law? You already have to hire professionals and you've already followed that law.
Right, but in, in this section, it says this policy shall be approved by the board. I, I don't know that we don't need the written policy. It's, maybe we do, maybe we don't.
It's in the bylaws.
I, I'm not aware if you have, have what, I can tell you that there's a statute that requires how you contract with professionals. That's what this is, as far as I can tell you, follow that contract.
Right, so we'd only be in violation of bylaws if we, which is, you know, not the same, but.
The, the, the bylaws say you have, say you have to have a policy. If you don't have a policy, you don't have a policy. I think that. If you need a hydrogeologist, you need a hydrogeologist. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think so too.
Policy would say.
I'm not sure either. I haven't seen it, so.
We don't have one. So regardless of whether it's in there, we don't have one, so.
One of the things we can fix is the bylaw.
There you go. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? No favorites?
No, Blake, you mentioned one of them.
I like Freezing Nichols because our geologist is associated with that firm that already did the geological survey. Basically, if we went with a different firm, which I'm not against, we would have to start the geological survey all over again. And I don't know if y'all remember, but I think it took quite a while to get the geological word done. And I wanna, I wanna make something happen here and not just kick the can down the road. Because we obviously need somebody pretty intelligent to interpret the data that we have.
Have, have any of these people made a, uh, financial proposal? I mean, you know, I looked all through this and it was like resumes and whatnot and. Certainly Freezing Nichols, they're impressive, but if, do we know what it'll cost on any of them? Or, or are we gonna hire, tentatively start the discussion, choose one to start discussion with and then come up with numbers?
Yeah, would, we, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be hiring them or not because, I mean, we're, we're being pressured about, uh, doing it under the contract contractual basis. So it would have to be some back and forth here before we could get to a final hiring. Uh, but we can certainly discuss it. We can discuss who we like. Uh, I don't know, Greg, if we vote on who we like, then we, um, what's the process there?
There should be a motion and a second and a vote on who you want to select.
But that's not, but that, that's a selection. That doesn't mean that you've hired them until you've gone through the contractual process or come to some term of agreement, right?
The, the motion should be for the general manager to, to contract, select a person, and if that contract's unacceptable, you move to the next person.
Bingo. Okay.
Wes, I think Freeze Nickel would be a good.
I like it. I like that one.
He'd be very competent.
I like it for a lot of reasons and I've done a lot of research on some of the people who work at all these, all these firms and I, I like that one. He's the one that signed the report on, on our, our geology, so it's, it's probably the best choice.
Yeah.
For the information that we've got.
I make a motion that we start the process with Freeze and Nichols. Um, you know, what, whatever Greg just said with Janelle, to get them to propose a contract.
Let me suggest a little language there, Director.
Go ahead.
Um, motion to authorize the general, uh, manager to negotiate a contract with Freeze Nichols. Is that correct, Greg?
That's correct. The general manager will bring that contract back to the boards for final approval.
Right, with the agreement that the general manager will bring that contract back, the final approval to the board. That's the motion.
So, so move.
Well, we're gonna, we're, we're, we're gonna talk about it anyway, okay? We got a motion, we got a second, let's talk.
Sure. I think it's premature to pick one of these four. I think it'd be great to invite one of, of representative from these companies down here. To tell us why that we should pick them. I think that's a big choice. And the reasons that we've mentioned so far, I don't think are good enough to differentiate between these four. You know, you can look at this, okay, that's a cool picture. It's got some stuff. That's Freezing Nichols right here. And this is public information, I think, too, so, so we could do that. You can look at this and this guy didn't do a picture, so, you know, I don't like him, but he might be the smartest guy out there. I don't know. This person right here, LRE, we've done work with them, they're good. Like what, you know, what keeps them, like, they might be better. They might be more local. I'm not even talking about where these offices are. This one right here has pictures of our springs, so that's kinda cool. So this is the only one, you know, in my mind that is just by off the face of it, more in touch with what's happening here. It's got pictures of this place. So I think it's a little too early to just say, these are Nichols, like, they're cool. That's my opinion. And I'm not trying to delay the game, you know, it's, yeah, there's a delay a lot around here, but I think we ought to talk to some of these people. That's my opinion.
Well. Point taken. Uh, I've done my due diligence on all four excessively and I'm, I'm comfortable with my decision. Uh, if the board wants to bring them all down and have it sit down and wait. Wait, that's. Whatever the board's pleasure.
Motion on the table.
Yep, motion and a second's on the table. Do we have more discussion?
Um, this is awkward. Um, my, my only comment about LRE is the gentleman that did the work at LRE is now with Freeze and Nichols. I think the way you have included to that.
Good point.
That would be.
That could be a good thing or a bad thing, maybe, you know?
Well, it's just a, it's just a point the board needed to know.
Yeah, I mean.
The board needs to know that he had been there and now he's there.
The geology from where we were before, we had three layers of geological formation, and now we've got seven to nine. And I think that did take a while. I'm, I'm gonna wave, stay out of it, but, uh.
Yeah, no, I mean. You're gonna be reading the information.
Yeah.
He's working with whoever we get.
You know, and this has nothing to do with bids either, right? Because if, if we have a certain scope of work. Freeze and Nichols could charge us a hundred grand a year and.
It's in the contract.
Whatever, I know, but they'd have to bid the job, right? So if you pick one without more knowledge about the billing cycle, then. How do you know you're getting the best bang for the buck? I don't think it's, uh, time to pick Freeze and Nichols. I don't know Freeze and Nichols. We might pick Freeze and Nichols. I don't care.
I don't know how you bid, I don't know how you bid it, though. That's the problem. It'd be like, you'd fire one, one year, cause the other guy was twenty dollars cheaper. I mean, they just.
Be twenty.
Well, twenty thousand.
If you're gonna wanna bid, you're gonna wanna scope of work, a very defined scope of work, and, um, and it's gonna be very, I can just tell you, I've been working there for thirteen years. Um, it would be very difficult for y'all to come up with a scope of work for a consultant bid. If you wanted, if you wanted to unseal a bid and go with the low-cost bidder or something, I don't think that's what you're looking for. Like, you need somebody that understands what's happening in the county, somebody that is unbiased, that will work with both sides of the aisle here. Um, and try to put real science together and come up with a solution. And, and whoever that is, whoever y'all choose, will all work with.
Whoever that is, though, and it's part of the findings of the audit, right, that we need. A contract that says, for example, I'm gonna give you a model by December of twenty twenty-six.
I think that's the negotiation.
And then, you know, and it's gonna cost, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, and then, you know, you, you do the contract. But, I mean, you gotta have scope of work, you gotta know how much it's gonna cost, and you gotta pick the person.
Motion on the floor.
We got a motion on the floor. I'm calling for a question. If we're gonna keep, if we're gonna keep beating this up, cause we're just going round and round and round. Uh. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Can you repeat the motion again, Breeze?
Sure. The motion is to authorize the general manager to negotiate a contract, uh, with Freeze Nichols. To, to perform hydrological services for this district. She will bring that contract back for ratification by this board. Approval. In other words, we're not into the contract until we get to read it.
Okay, how do you, how? This is probably be a lot beyond me, but, uh, how do you?
Director, director, discussion is over. I'm calling to vote. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign.
Harry, would you vote?
He didn't abstain.
So two abstentions.
No. No.
He voted against it.
Yeah, one against.
One against, one abstention. Okay. Uh, discussion, possible action, financial statements for May twenty twenty-five. All right, so total income. Six hundred and forty-one thousand eighty-two dollars and forty-six cents. Total expense, two hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Net profit loss, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and four cents. Avroborium taxes receivable, six thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. Expenses payable, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. The net was three thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Accounts receivable, twenty-one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and forty-two cents. The general fund, thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty, uh, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Money market, three hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Petty cash, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Well, long deposit, three thousand seven hundred. Text pool, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and five cents. Uh, the number one CD, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents. And the number two CD, two hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-eight cents.
I make a motion, we accept with the change on the text pool, same as we did last month. I don't know what that point oh, 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 two, six, two, oh, seven mean, but back on item seventeen, it shows a, a current return of four and a quarter percent. So get rid of the two, whatever that is, and. And, uh, you can put, either put various or four, two, five, you know, currently. With that change, I make motion, we accept.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we got the investment report, not on the agenda, but we don't take action on it, so give it to us.
Review. Done.
You guys let me know and we'll move on to eighteen.
Move on.
Go ahead.
Okay, invoices received and invoices paid.
Make a motion with proof, invoices paid or received, received and paid.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, review Texas Water Development Board Dryad Index and Aqua Monitoring Data. I looked at that a long time ago. You guys are good to go to that. Just don't talk about future agenda items, get to that one.
Um, my only question is, since we are in discussion on hiring a hydrologist, I'd like to, uh. As soon as we get something rolling on it, I think we ought to have a special meeting just to kinda know where we're at. I don't wanna do this monthly. That's my personal opinion. I think that we need to have some special meeting.
Oh, I agree. I agree a hundred percent. We gotta get moving, man.
Need to get it done as quickly as possible.
We just need to get.
Well, look, once. Once she gets that kinda ironed out. Uh. Why don't we just send out an email to everybody that. We're ready with a proposed date, and then everybody can come back and say whether they can be here or not, and we can kinda get coordinated and get everybody here. Okay? Will that work?
That'll work.
And maybe, you know, she get it done and.
It has to be at night.
Uh, well, I, look, once we get it done, whatever. I mean, it, it's a special meeting. I don't care, I don't care when everybody wants to have it.
The only thing that I, and I know we've got this all, but just for the board that we might prepare is just what we spent with Dr. Bill on an annual basis, kind of. Average, and then compare it to the new services, you just, like, Director Palmer.
Get a feel, yeah.
Get a feel, that way, you know, we'll know if they're a hundred percent higher, and then we're like, well, we can't do that. You know what I mean? But that would be kinda get a feel for it, and I think Director Palmer would probably be in favor of that, too, just so we kinda know, hey, we're.
That's what I was talking about.
I think it's a good idea to look at those numbers for sure. Well, it's good comparison. Future agenda items? We talked about the special meeting for that. Anything else?
Bring up rule, uh, four oh four, after Greg gets to the misogynist. Number one, two. Um. Change in bylaws. About term of service, whatever, as Greg mentioned. Three, uh, revisit item ten. After, after the bylaw.
Okay, Director, are you gonna have those bylaws, uh, changes to us prior to the meeting, so we can review those?
Just, just like I did this time, yes.
Okay.
Do you want to, uh, deal with, uh, going over the rules?
I think we need to have a rules committee.
Oh, we definitely need to have a rules committee meeting. Anybody wants to volunteer when they're available?
I think that it's gonna take more than a couple hours, too, so.
No, it's gonna take more than one me.
Well.
It's gonna take a lot of work.
So I don't know if we wanna do an intro where everybody kinda presents what their issue is with the rule. What the state audit found, and go through it that way before we call in Greg, so we kinda have a game plan and be thinking about it, or if we wanna have Greg and do a workshop.
I think we really need, I think we really need just kinda read through the rules to start with and talk about how they work. And, and, and start trying to identify where some of the loopholes are at, where we got some problems. Uh, where it may conflict with each other. You know, hanging Chad, whatever you wanna call it, wherever the problems are at. We have to identify them to start with. Once we figure out where they're at, I think that's a good time to pull Greg in to figure out the legalese on how we get to fixing them.
And since it's sudden, not so overwhelming, should we focus on a section at a time?
I don't know. I think the first meeting, the first thing to do at the first meeting is get everybody the rules and come up with that plan. Yeah, and, and, and a section at a time's not a bad idea. That's not a bad idea, a, a way to go at all. Uh, go a section, find all the problems, go another section, find some more. Uh, yeah, this is the only way we're gonna get it done.
Do you want to start that, at, um?
Board's pleasure, as far as I'm concerned.
I think it's possible.
Yeah.
Well, because it's a full board on the committee, okay? Um, we're gonna have to post it, so we need seventy-two hours.
Okay.
Uh, before we can, before we can get it up. So, I mean, if we decided that we wanted to have one. You know, we'd have to post it before we, before we could have it like on Monday, we'd have to post it Friday. So. Is that right? Tuesday, I don't know. Uh, but we, we have to know a little bit in advance, and we have to think about what time we wanna do it, but it, it's a matter of getting this all here. My availability, uh, my schedule is more flexible than most everybody else's.
I'll be able more, more so in the afternoons than in the mornings.
Early afternoon, late afternoon.
Anytime in the afternoon, usually.
I just know we need to block out, you know, the first one, you come up with a plan and whatnot, we're probably coming here at first meeting in an hour. Yeah, we're, we're gonna do a bunch, except talk about how we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so why don't we just go ahead and have that one next week?
Let's shoot for Tuesday.
Time by me? Is that agreeable to everybody else?
Four o'clock?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Will that not push too much into your schedule?
Schedule it and I'll see what my job allows.
Well, I was thinking, well, later in the, closer to five, might not be as.
My average is nine to five. You guys schedule it.
Well, I didn't know what, I didn't know exact, I didn't know exactly when it was.
Yeah, I'm, I'll try to work it out. That's all.
Well, I was, I was just trying to work within your timeframe, so.
Thank you. Yeah, that'd be great.
If at all possible. So.
If it doesn't take that long for the first, you'll just make it six. We'll be over, out of here at seven.
There you go, and then the conflict, yeah. Well, yeah.
Later's better, but you guys.
Let's do, let's do, let's do six. It's gonna be a short one, anyway. And then, maybe we can talk more about that and figure it out. Maybe, maybe weekends.
Maybe, that's cool.
I don't know. I'm, I'm on work, William.
One, one other thing, I talked, now about it on the, the agenda. If, if the directors could get the draft of the agenda no later than, say, Wednesday. That gives us a day to look at it so that it can still be published on Friday in time for the, to meet the three-day requirement.
We need to all be getting together on that agenda, probably Monday and Tuesday.
That's fine.
The sooner, the better. We need to all be working on that together. We're all responsible for it, and we all need to make sure that it's properly legal, and we put, put the things that we need to put.
I got one question about it. So I think the Fort Clark's deal is more than seventy-two hours, isn't it? Okay, but for, is there any board members here?
Seventy-two hours.
Well, it's seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two, it's.
Who and I not government institution. So, legislative session just passed, I believe it's effective, uh, September first, your seventy-two hour posting is moving to three business days.
Ah, so you can't count over the weekend.
You can't count over the weekend. I don't believe, if Greg's still online, he'll be able to do this, but in the legislature. I believe the effective date is, is, um, September first. Don't hold me to that. We're on video here.
Most of the time, it usually is. There are some exceptions in some laws where they.
But it is moving, I know it is moving from seventy-two hours to three business days. You might start to get used to doing that.
Right, sooner, the better.
Absolutely. Absolutely, so we're gonna do that, uh, we'll shoot for Tuesday at six.
We still need Greg?
Uh. He's still here, no. He's asleep.
Greg? Yeah, Jim was just enlightening us on the, uh, three business day rules, uh, for calling a meeting. You know anything about that?
Yeah, yeah, the, the bill making that change pass, let me play it. I'm checking right now, see if I can.
Okay. Well, we're gonna start trying to practice it, cause it is gonna go into effect, right?
Before we go, Jim.
Yeah, in fact, there were, there were a couple things. One of the changes, uh, make the, uh, a change.
Yeah, we just gonna review it.
It follows the law the way that I think we did it during the long, 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 anyway.
Jim, let me speak. Jim.
No, he's.
The, uh. The main. The change, one of Jim to mention, which is that it's, it's changing from seventy-two hours to three business days. I'm taking a seat back end, if the governor sign that again or not.
Okay. Well, we're gonna start putting it into effect. Are we good?
The current law requires at least seventy-two hours. If you go three business days, you, you at least have that.
Sounds good. I guess, I guess we're wrapped up with you for tonight, Greg. Appreciate everything.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks. Any other future agenda items, gentlemen? Not a move, we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you adjourn?